As a reminder, everything is being recorded. And the order of events tonight will be as follows. For each public hearing, staff will introduce the agenda item and present a summary of the staff report. The applicant will be then asked to explain their proposal in further detail and answer any questions from the Planning Commission members. I will then open the floor to public comment, first for people in support of the item, and then for people in opposition of the item. When you step to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. All comments will be addressed to the commissioners. If there's any questions to ask of the applicant or anybody else, we will ask the questions. So ask us and we will direct everything towards the end of the conversation. Each speaker will have a chance to speak. Once their comments, please have their comments less than five minutes. Speakers are encouraged to address only new and relevant information pertaining to the item. Above all, please be cordial to all meeting participants and refrain from side conversations and speaking out of turn. Lastly, the decisions of the conditional use permit applications may be appealed to the County Board of Commissioners by submitting a letter to the County Planning Commission within five business days of this meeting. All right, with that, we'll do roll call.
Commissioner Ensted?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Commissioner Arons?
Here.
Commissioner Jonglin?
Here.
City of Sioux Falls?
Good evening, Commissioners. We'll also do roll call on our side. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Paulson?
Here.
Commissioner Lukey?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Urban? Sean, are you there? We've got Sean, I can see him there, that's a thumbs up, we'll call that. And I'm Commissioner Nyberg, we have a quorum on the city side.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll go for the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Everyone received a copy and I assume they've reviewed them. Are there any comments or changes to make?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
A second, Ensted.
All right, we've got a motion, a second to approve. Let's take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Ensted?
Yeah.
Commissioner Scott?
Yeah.
Commissioner Arons?
Yes.
Commissioner Jonglin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
City of Sioux Falls?
Commissioners, can I get a motion to approve on the city side? I'll send a vote, Johnson.
Lukey, second.
Got a motion and a second, we'll also take a roll call vote on that. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Paulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
That has passed 5-0 on the city side.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we'll do public input on any items not on the agenda. Would anybody like to speak on anything they have thoughts on?
We need to approve the agenda.
Oh, I get excited again. I always miss one in the front, don't I? All right, we have the agenda in front of us. Anybody have any changes or comments to make on that? Toby, you're good?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Take a motion, please.
Move to approve.
I'll second, Ensted.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Ensted?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Arons?
Yes.
Commissioner Jonglin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
City of Sioux Falls?
City Commissioners, can I get a motion to approve of the agenda? Motion to approve the agenda, Johnson?
I'll second, Fisher.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Paulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukey?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukey? Yes. Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
The agenda has been approved on the city side.
Thank you, city. Now we get to my favorite part, public input of non-agenda items. Do we have any speakers? Seeing none, I will close that. Consideration of unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business, Toby?
None, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. City of Sioux Falls?
Commissioners, any unfinished business? None on the city side.
All right, thank you. New business. Toby would like to do a staff report, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Toby Brown representing County Planning. This first item is an application from John Aggie. This is an application to change his own of approximately 39.56 acres from the A1 agricultural district to the RRO residential district. This development or the concept that was submitted with the application is a 25-lot subdivision, subdivision be rural residential development. This property is currently utilized for primarily agricultural uses. There is an existing single-family dwelling on the property. The single-family dwelling will remain on the property and be part of the overall subdivision. This proposal will be a rural subdivision development, meaning that it will not be, no city infrastructure will be provided or maintained. All the individual lots will have individual onsite wastewater treatment systems and water will be provided by Lincoln County Rural Water System. This application is in conformance with the Joint Jurisdictional Comprehensive Plan, which is SHAPE Sioux Falls 2040. The application, we did post the property and we also did, the applicant did send notification out. If you recall, this was an item that was tabled previously last month because of some incompleteness in the preliminary plan. The preliminary plan will be item number two on the agenda. Again, this first item is an application or petition to change the zoning of the property. Again, this is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and staff does recommend approval of this application. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Do you have any question for Toby?
No.
All right, seeing none. City of Sioux Falls, do you have any questions for Mr. Brown?
Any questions, City Commissioners? None at this time.
All right, seeing none. We will ask the applicant to come forward and speak on their proposal.
Thank you. I'm Alan Aggie from Yankton, South Dakota, one of the Aggie family involved with this project. And on behalf of the Aggie family, I do want to thank the Joint Planning Commission for their time in having this rezoning and the preliminary plan requests on the agenda tonight. And I do want to thank as well the City of Sioux Falls and the Lincoln County Planning and Engineering staffs for their work and meeting with the family, meeting with us, the Aggie family and the CDI engineers in fulfilling the requirements that are necessary to bring this before you with the recommendations for approval. Just to speak to the rezoning at this point, okay, thank you. And as the staff analysis states, and Toby did mention, the rezoning is consistent with the future land use map of the SHAPE Sioux Falls 2040 Comprehensive Plan and is consistent with the zoning in the existing nearby subdivisions. So with that, I do believe again that with the staff working with us and our engineering group, that we have fulfilled the requirements and we thank you for the time in reviewing this application.
Thank you. Alan, one second quick. Do the Commissioners have any questions for Alan?
Sure. No.
No. City of Sioux Falls, do you have any questions?
City Commissioners, any questions for Alan?
Yeah, I just have a question about the, you said there's one existing property on the lot already?
Correct.
Will that just stay there or what is the plans for that?
Yes.
Current?
Our mother in attendance tonight is still living there and she will remain there as long as she's willing, she's willing and able. And the consideration is, some of the other family members, her children are considering of building in the area, in the development and being close to mother for as long as she stays there. And I believe as mentioned earlier, the intent is to leave that home there for the foreseeable future as one of the lots in the development.
Commissioners, any other questions, Commissioners? No further questions from the city side.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
All right, I would ask anybody in opposition of, oh, sorry, we're in favor. Anybody in favor of the petition, come up and speak, please. Okay, seeing none. Anybody in opposition of the applicant, please come up. All right, seeing none. We will close the floor to public comment. Commissioners, I ask movement so we can discuss.
Mr. Chairman, I would be honored to make a motion. This is the, this is part of my commission district that I represent. And so I'd like to make a motion that we change the zoning from A1 agriculture to rural residential. I'll second, Scott.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst Lincoln County Commissioners?
Well, I think the biggest issue here with regard to this rezone is I think it's consistent with the character of the neighborhood. And what do I mean by that? There, it is a high-growth prospect area. That whole Sioux River Valley area there, next to the river, is primed for growth and development. And the city and our planning staff recently found that this particular parcel of land fell outside of the tier-three growth area. And so as a result of it falling outside of the tier-three growth area, and what that means for the folks at home is that Sioux Falls thinks it'll take 16 to 25 years for the city to grow fast enough in order to put services out there. Well, by falling outside of the tier-three growth area now, that allows us as a planning commission to be able to give this the thumbs up because what these guys are going to do is they're going to put their own drainage system in out there for each particular parcel. And then the other issue, the other factor here I think that should be considered is character of the neighborhood. I mean, you're going to be adjacent to a neighborhood that is, has essentially the same thing that you're going to do. You've got the Indian Hills development out there and you're going to be on the, which side of it?
West side.
You're going to be on the west side of it. And so in terms of the adjacency or the character of the neighborhood, you're going to fit in with the character of the neighborhood out there. And it's important to note that northern Lincoln County is moving away from A1 agricultural. I mean, a lot of those people who farm those fields out there would like to sell their property to developers like you. And so I think it's completely consistent with the character of the neighborhood right now, as well as with a growth pattern that we have here in Lincoln County, to be able to change the zoning from A1 ag to rural residential. So I hope I gather support from the other members of the commission for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Commissioners? All right, hearing none, we'll ask for roll call, please.
Commissioner Ensted?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Arons?
Yes.
Commissioner Jonglin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. City of Sioux Falls?
City Commissioners, the rezoning application has passed on the county side. Do I have a motion on the city side?
This is Lukey, I'll make a motion to approve.
Urban, second.
The motion and a second. City Commissioners, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, we will take a roll call vote. Commissioner Jensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Paulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
The zone application has passed 5-0 on the city side.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brown, can we do a number two, please?
Yes, thanks for, Chairman. So this next item is in conjunction with that rezone. This is a preliminary plan that was submitted with the application. So as you can see, the proposal is again for a 25-lot development. And if you had a chance to read the staff report, you'll notice that staff recommended that not all the items were complete, but we still recommended that you approve it forward for the, and all changes would be completed before the city council and the County Commission joint elected officials meeting. However, as of this afternoon, the City of Sioux Falls staff have identified that all of the requirements of the preliminary plan have been met. And so with that, staff would recommend that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the preliminary plan that is before he is item number two.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Lincoln County Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? Seeing none. City of Sioux Falls?
City Commissioners, any questions on this item?
Mr. Commissioner, Lukey, I got a question on, usually I don't have questions on drainage, but I don't see anything where there's any drain off in this area. And I didn't know if the city or county had an issue with drainage on this because there's no retention pond that I see anywhere.
Correct, Commissioner. This is Toby Brown with Lincoln County Planning. So during the, in the preliminary plan phase, we did identify county staff and city staff the need for additional engineering determination for detention. That will be completed in the next phase of the engineering plans. So at this stage, again, staff is comfortable with the submittal as presented.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions on the city side? No further questions on the city side.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to ask the applicant to come forward and discuss their proposal.
Again, thank you. This is Alan. Very brief, as per what has been explained by Toby, in agreement. And as for this preliminary subdivision plan submittal, as noted, the criteria has been submitted and provided as well. The utility providers have been involved with the development design. And as again noted in the staff analysis, all the items to the plan have been provided and conform to the comprehensive plan and the major street plan. So again, thank you for the consideration to approve.
Thank you. Commissioners, any further questions for Mr. Aggie? None. City of Sioux Falls, do you have any questions?
City Commissioners, any additional questions for the applicant? Seeing none.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'll ask anybody in present to come and speak in favor of the applicant. Seeing none, I will ask anybody in opposition of the applicant. All right, seeing none, I will close the floor to public comment and ask for a motion from the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. Ms. Aggie, which lot is yours out there?
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Yes, number seventeen shows the existing house there.
You bet. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to, what is the STAN one form here that we need to use? I'll make a motion to approve the application for preliminary subdivision plan pursuant to the terms and conditions found in the staff report.
I'll second, Ensted.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. At this time, any discussion amongst the Commissioners? No, before we take roll call, I just want to say it's a really nice area and when my kids get a little bit older, I can move a little farther away. I'd like to move on down there. All right, I ask for roll call, please.
Commissioner Ensted?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Arons?
Yes.
Commissioner Jonglin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
City of Sioux Falls?
City Commissioners, the preliminary subdivision plan has been approved on the county side. Do I have a motion on the city side? Motion to approve, Paulson?
Second.
Commissioner? We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to mention quick, it looks like between the board packet that we were emailed and the lot presentation that's on the screen from Lincoln County right now, there's a couple variations of the lot layout. What caught my attention was the comment that Ms. Aggie's lot was number seventeen, but I'm looking at a version that shows it as number eighteen?
Yep.
For the existing property. I don't know how material that is, but the presentation is very disjointed because of that. What I'm referring to specifically for staff is page sixteen of thirty-six in the county packet compared to what's being displayed right now as the lot layout on the computer.
Yeah, there's like twenty, twenty lots on.
And again, as Toby already mentioned, because of Commissioner Lukey's question on the drainage, there's obviously still some work, some i's being dotted, some t's being crossed, but that just strikes me as a rather glaring discrepancy. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Can we possibly get Toby up to address that if we feel he's best or possibly if the applicant would like to address it?
Yes, so Commissioners, this is Toby. Is this the version that you're referencing here?
Yes.
Okay, so those are both in the packet. If you go to the next of what I pulled up, so this was the original submittal, which has some primarily the drainage and those different types of items. That would be correct, minus the lot changes. So this version, the lot, brand new revised lot layout, that should be after that submittal. And this is an updated version, that is the correct version. And I apologize for the confusion, we just included all of it to try to be as transparent as possible because the updated lot layout didn't include the drainage grading and the street plan, so that was left in the previous version, which those items did not change. Yeah. I'll explain kind of why it was revised. So we did have a meeting with the applicant, city staff and county staff, and there was an error in that first version that you're seeing, that the lots did not meet the 125-foot requirement. So this updated version, the only change was is some of the lots changed and they lost two because they had to meet the minimum frontage of 125 feet. But the version I have up on the screen, that's the correct version of the lot layout. I apologize, you'll have to reference back to that other one for this grading drainage and street layout. And partially this is, yep, go ahead.
No, thank you. I think that answers the question. Commissioners, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussions, questions at all? Seeing no further questions or discussion, we will go ahead and take a vote on this item.
Actually, Commissioner, was that with the conditions? I know the county side said conditions. Was that motion made with the conditions?
Question for Toby on that, I had heard a reference to conditions in the motion, but I don't know if I see them in my packet. Are there any conditions?
Staff didn't recommend any conditions, Commissioners.
Thank you.
We're good. Any further discussion, City Commissioners? We'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Paulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
The preliminary subdivision plan has passed on the city side.
Thank you very much. Aggie family, good luck and thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Brown, you know, number three?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This next item is a conditional use permit application specifically for motor vehicle sales, display, service, repair shop and an auto body shop. The applicant is Auto Rex LLC. Apologize as I get to there. So the applicant is proposing to utilize an existing suite, specifically suite number three in a building that was permitted as a warehouse. And the suite number three would be utilized for the proposed use. This, as you can see in this concept plan that was submitted with the application, he does identify parking for vehicles for sale and then also for employee parking, so it does meet those minimum requirements, as well as the applicant intends to do these, to hire two employees, and the hours of operation would be 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday. The application indicated no internal or external modifications to the building. We anticipate that most of the work would be done inside the building, so overall spillage onto the adjacent properties or just adjacent tenants should be minimal for that aspect of it. So staff has recommended adoption of this, or approval of this conditional use permit subject to the conditions that were identified in the staff report. Again, this is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Lincoln County Commissioners, any questions for staff?
No.
All right, seeing none. City of Sioux Falls?
City Commissioners, any questions for Toby on this item? No questions on the city side.
All right, thank you. With that, I'd ask the applicant to come forward and discuss their proposal.
Thank you. Good afternoon, dear commission. My name is Vladislav Martenyuk. Currently, I have lease on a commercial space on the address of 27071 Miller Place, seat number three, in Sioux Falls. And I'm planning to have after dealership business on that address. I understand and agree with all conditions. And if anyone have any questions?
Thank you. You guys have any questions?
Is there anything, maybe I missed it, but is there anything in the, in the conditions about the, about the number of vehicles?
Numbers is going to be about eight.
But there's nothing in the condition that says it's limited to or it could be whatever?
No, there is no recommended condition for that. We typically go off of what the parking spaces would allow.
So it's limited to what the parking spaces are generally?
For outside, correct.
Okay.
And if you look at condition number seven, it says that onsite parking.
I'm sorry, I'm very bad in English. It's hard for me to understand.
What was that?
The condition number six, it does state that vehicles for sale shall park onsite in the designated spaces. Is that what you're talking about, Toby?
Correct. Nope. Nope, that's good. Nope, that's good.
All right. I did one, so are there other suites in this building?
Yes.
And then you've cleared with the owner to allow parking in the back and all that. You're good and good to go with him?
Yes, I have permission from landlord.
Okay, thank you. All right, City of Sioux Falls, do you have any questions for the applicant?
City Commissioners, any questions? No questions on the city side.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, at this time, I'll ask anybody in favor to come on up and speak for the applicant. Seeing none, I'll ask anybody in opposition to speak for the applicant. And seeing none, I will close the floor to public comment, and I will ask for recommendation from the commission.
I'll make a motion to approve with the, with the conditions.
I'll second, Ensted.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. City of Sioux Falls? Oh, sorry. Let's take a roll call.
Is that also with the findings?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Ensted?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner John Lane?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. City of Sioux Falls?
City Commissioners, the conditional use permit has been approved on the county side subject to two findings and seven conditions. Do I have a motion on the city side?
This is Lukey. I'll make a motion for approval with the two findings and the seven conditions.
Second, Johnson. We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Lukey?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Conditional use permit has passed five to zero on the city side.
Thank you very much. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
All right, with that, next we have adjournment, so I ask for a motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, discussion, let's take a roll call.
Commissioner Ensted?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner John Lane?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. City of Sioux Falls?
City Commissioners, can I get a motion to adjourn?
This is Lukey. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, Johnson. Got a motion and a second. We'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Fisher Paulson?
Yes.
Fisher Lukey?
Yes.
Fisher Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Thank you all. We are adjourned on the city side.
Thank you, City of Sioux Falls, and thank you, everybody. Have a great night.